Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, March 23rd, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Colbrook?
Here.
Hershey?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Charlie, we're not hearing anything in council chambers.
Jason has control.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meetings. This is a public hearing on March 9th, the meeting on March 9th, and a special meeting on March 16th.
I'll move approval of those minutes.
One second.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Sharice.
Hi, Sharice. Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And just for the record, because it wasn't projecting here in the council chambers, we have Bill Brown, Sharice Hershey, Eric Jacobson. Is Dennis here?
Yes.
Dennis Roberts?
Yes, he is.
Mary Alice Wu?
Yes.
Okay, so we have five council members attending via Zoom and two are here in person. So because this is a new format for us, I wanted to describe the logistics for tonight's meeting. Per the provisions of the gubernatorial disaster proclamation and executive order number five, the provisions of the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120 requiring in-person attendance by members of a public body are suspended. In addition, section four of the City of Urbana Temporary Emergency Ordinance to address the COVID-19 pandemic provides for meetings of the Urbana City Council to be conducted electronically. So tonight, we have a hybrid approach there. In addition to the city council members attending, the city staff attending in person are city administrator Carol Mitten and city attorney Jim Simon. Our sustainability and resilience manager Scott Tess is zooming in. City clerk Charlie Smythe is attending in person, and he's sitting in a separate room. UP-TV manager Jason Liggett and Austin Pontius are at the controls, and they're in a separate room as well. So this meeting is being streamed live as usual, and it'll be recorded for later viewing on UP-TV. The recording also will be posted to the city's website tomorrow. Due to technical difficulties and the fact that this is a learning process for all of us, public input will be taken tonight via email. You can email it to cityclerk@urbanaillinois.us. Comments will be entered into the record. Per section 10 of Urbana's Temporary Emergency Ordinance to address the COVID-19 pandemic and the governor's executive order number eight to stay at home, the Urbana City Building is closed to the public tonight in order to protect the health and welfare of city employees and reduce spread of disease in the community. There are no members of the public in the audience. In order to facilitate a smooth interchange between virtual and in-person council members, I'm going to do the following for each agenda item that's reported out of the committee of the whole. And I'll actually, I'll wait until we get to that point, and I'll go over the procedure for that as well. So at this point, we ask for any additions to the agenda. There are none. Is there any public input that has come in via email?
Not at this point.
Not at this point. Next up is reports of the standing committee, and that'll be reported out by committee chair Jared Miller. So after Chair Miller moves the item out of the committee, I'm going to ask Bill Colbrook, since he's here in person, to second it. And then I'm going to call on each virtual attendee individually for questions, followed by each of you who are here in person. And then following the questions, I'll go through and ask each virtual attendee individually for comments and discussion. And again, back to the comments from each in-person attendee. And if you think of something and your question arises, just take a note of it, and when I get to you, then you can ask that question. And that way, we can avoid kind of jumping in over each other. And I ask those who are attending to please, especially those electronically, please speak clearly and slowly so the recording secretary can hear. So Chair Miller, we have two ordinances to report out.
All right. Well, last week, the committee of the whole met and sent two items forward to full council, both that received recommendations for approval, the first of which is ordinance number 2020-03-009, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, specifically 107 North Gregory Street. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
And I second it.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill. Are there any questions? I'll start with Mary Alice.
No, not at this time.
Eric?
I have no questions.
Sharice?
No, I don't have any questions.
Dennis?
No, I think we covered it pretty well during our committee meeting.
And Bill Brown?
No questions.
No questions. Okay. Any questions from those in person?
None from me.
None from me.
Okay. Any comments? Start again. Mary Alice, any comments?
Nope.
Eric?
No.
Sharice?
No.
Bill Brown?
No comments.
Dennis Roberts?
I think it's positive because it satisfies some of the needs we have for community development and supports the continuation of the use of this building as a facility for affordable housing.
Thank you. Jared, comments?
I'm good.
Bill?
No comments.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Hershey?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Jared?
All right. Next up is resolution number 2020-03-015R, a resolution adopting financial policies. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
And I second it.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill. I'll go through virtual attendees. Any questions? Mary Alice?
Nope.
Eric?
No.
Sharice?
No, I think we kind of covered that pretty good last week.
Okay. Bill Brown?
No questions.
Dennis?
No, I don't have any.
Jared?
No, none here.
Bill?
No questions.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? I'll start going back the other way. Jared?
Nope.
Dennis Roberts?
No, I don't have any.
Bill Brown?
Nope.
Sharice?
No.
Eric?
No.
Mary Alice?
No.
Bill Colbrook?
No.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Hershey?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of special committees. Reports of officers. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Is Scott Tess, has he joined us?
I thought so.
We think so? Okay.
I see him.
He's here.
He's here. Okay. First up is resolution number 2020-03-016R, which is a resolution approving a solar facility ground lease with Solarstar Urbana Landfill East LLC. And then another resolution, 2020-03-017R, resolution approving a solar facility ground lease with Solarstar Urbana Landfill West. Scott, would you like to present this topic? Okay. We do have a backup plan for Scott to call in. How about if Carol, would you like to begin, and then hopefully Scott will chime in on the phone?
I will do my best, and I'll try to summarize rather than read the memo. But you'll remember that at the end of 2017, we completed a qualifications-based solicitation to try to find an entity that would build a solar array on the city's closed landfill. And we selected SunPower, and we entered into a lease option with SunPower. And that gave them, SunPower, the exclusive right to develop the solar array for a period of two years. So in 2019, the city and SunPower project was selected for two low-income community solar incentives for two separate solar developments on the landfill. We had originally been pursuing a different type of incentive program, and this has turned out to be, I think, a much more advantageous fit all around, given the nature of the program and so forth. So the project companies allow SunPower to bring in an investor who optimally finances the projects, and SunPower has selected Next Amp, which is a firm with extensive experience investing in solar energy assets. So SunPower remains contractually involved in the project to provide post-contract services. And electricity purchasers who are subscribers can buy or lease a share of the community solar system, and it's helpful to the city because we're going to be a large user, and there's very competitively priced electricity that will come from this. So low-income residents will be able to take advantage of this particular solar program, and that's the part that is really helpful in the community. So what you have in front of you are two resolutions, because there's two separate ground leases because of the nature of the ownership of the landfill. So I guess, and I had sent this to the council a little ahead of a normal distribution of packets to see if people had any questions. The reason we're coming back to the council is we had originally, when we did the lease option, the council had approved language for the substantive terms of the lease. And even though there hasn't been any substantive changes, the changes we have made were considered to be sufficiently different that we needed to come back to the council. So there's not really a whole lot of change, but we're doing this to make sure that we're legally... Oh, we can hear Scott now? Great.
Okay. Well, thank you for that introduction, and I understand we have Scott Tess on the phone.
Thanks. That was a great summary. Sorry, I reconnected with computer audio, and if you can hear me now, that seems to be working.
You're great. We'll go through and see if council members have any questions. We'll start with the virtual attendees. Mary Alice, do you have any questions for Scott?
Yes, I have two questions, and I'm sure they were covered when we looked at this previously. My first question is that $300,000 will be paid to the city, and it'll be distributed basically one-third, two-thirds. And am I correct in that assumption?
So there are two separate leases for two separate solar arrays. One of those solar arrays sits entirely on a landfill parcel that the city owns. The other solar array sits on two different landfill parcels. One of those, the city owns, the other, the Champagne Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System owns. So for the first solar array I described that's completely on city property, that will be a one-time upfront $300,000 check. For the other solar array, that's the one that will be prorated on the basis of how much of each entity's property the solar array occupies.
And so my assumption is, is that the funds for both of these leases, the $300,000 from one and then the basically $133,000 from the other, will go into the general funds? Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's where they will go. We've talked about utilizing that money for some landfill maintenance activities that we've been contemplating.
Okay. And my second question has to do with, Carol had mentioned that this would be an opportunity for low-income residents to take advantage. I was wondering if you could expand upon that?
Sure. So the incentive we were successful in gaining is the low-income community solar incentive. So that's an income-qualified program from Solar for All, which is a state-of-Illinois program with the Illinois Power Agency. The low-income community solar program allows income-qualified folks to take advantage of some really good pricing. The point of the incentive is to bring down the cost of solar, and allows low-income households to, you know, have access to solar, to renewable energy. And so there's going to be, the developers will have an effort, a subscription effort, a marketing effort to recruit households who would be interested in this, and they'll subscribe, just like subscribing to any other retail electric supply offer. And then the city will be an anchor tenant, will purchase a portion of the supply from the solar array as well.
So does that mean, when you say they're going to solicit from people, does that mean that they're going to be sending out mailers, they're going to be going door-to-door? Is it a combination of those?
It's going to be a combination of strategies, but I think it's going to center around some public meetings and other media communications. I don't anticipate them going door-to-door, but there may be some direct mail.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to pursue a little bit farther the line of query that Mary Alice began. How do low-income households actually qualify you, qualify a household? Do they submit information about their income, or how does it work?
There are a couple of different pathways to get income-qualified. Folks that are interested should first go to the link that we have in the memo, and they can determine themselves if they think they're going to qualify. But in terms of the program having the, you know, verifying, there is the potential for submitting income records. There's also a pathway whereby, if I remember the details correctly, they can, if they're in a particular low-income census block, and they sign an affidavit or some such document stating that they qualify or what their income is, that will get a household qualified as well. But that process will also be, folks will be ushered through that process by the subscription manager when they start their work.
Any further questions, Eric?
No, that sounds fine. I'll just state for the record that I assume that that process does not use up much of the savings, that the cost of going through all that will be almost negligible. But just, I'll put a question mark on that. Will be almost negligible?
The cost, which cost in occurring to who are you thinking of?
The costs of verifying income eligibility.
That cost will be borne by the developer.
Okay.
Okay. Sharice, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. I assumed, I remember we voted on this a while back, didn't we?
Correct. Yeah, we had a qualifications-based selection, then a lease option, and then we won the incentives from the state, and now we're converting all of that into the 15-year lease.
Okay. No, I don't have any real questions right now. Actually, Eric answered asked, and Mary Alice asked the questions I would have asked.
Thank you. Bill Brown, questions?
Yeah, I think the last time we discussed this, there might have been something going through the zoning process to add solar use or photovoltaics to the zoning ordinance as a use under some categories. I don't ever remember that coming to council. Where are we with that process?
That did happen, but I can't remember the specific type of approval. But we did, the project did get the zoning approval that was necessary. I can try and look it up real quick, but I don't remember off the top of my head what the specific approval type was.
So is that currently light industrial?
I think it's conservation.
Conservation, okay.
I think.
And then in the contract, it said they could use it for any type of solar generation. I think we're assuming it's going to be photovoltaic, but I know there's also that type with the mirrors that has a boiler in the middle, and I don't know if that would be appropriate for that area.
No, no. It'll be, it'll be solar photovoltaic. And there's a, at the end of the attachment in your packet, there's a site plan, a draft site plan anyway, what they're planning at this point.
Yeah, I wonder why it's any type in the contract. I really appreciate all the work you guys have put into on this. It looks like it was a lot of work.
It's been a couple of years.
So just to clarify, it's a 15-year initial period and then two potential five-year renewals, basically?
Right.
So 25 years?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, if Lori is listening in, maybe she could clarify what the zoning, how the zoning was approved?
I'm not sure. I don't think Lori's on tonight. But we could find out for you.
I'd be happy to follow up on that, and if it's important before the vote, I'll run upstairs.
No, I don't think it's that important. I just couldn't remember if we, I didn't, I took a look at our zoning ordinance. I didn't see it mentioned, but maybe it was, you know, interpreted to be allowable in some area or something.
I think I might have just found it. Let me take a look here. An ordinance approving a special use permit, 901 North Smith Road, January 17th. It's in the memo.
Special use, and was it for photovoltaic?
It probably didn't say, it probably just said solar. Let me see. Looks like it's scanned in, so I can't keyword search it, maybe. Oh, no, there is. Solar energy system is what the, is what the memo says, and so I'm guessing, just going through it. Yeah, it looks like everything is solar.
Okay. Well, I guess if they propose something other than that, then we could potentially launch a plan case. If it was something very different than photovoltaic, we could probably launch a plan case to consider the impact.
Yeah, I'm looking through it, and it says solar energy system some places and solar photovoltaic at other places. But I don't anticipate anything other than solar panels going in there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Bill?
Nope, that's it. Thanks.
Dennis, questions?
I guess I had one, just briefly, Scott, in that the display will be erected, and it'll be there for five years and probably, you know, 10, 15 years, 20 years. Can you kind of briefly outline any kind of maintenance issues, which and who will be maintaining the array? I assume probably the installer.
Yeah, there's very little maintenance, but there is some. So there will occasionally be some electrical work. There will be seasonal vegetation maintenance. So for instance, the developer, the operator of the solar array is not going to want grass and trees growing up in front of the panels and shading them. So that'll, there'll be some seasonal landscape maintenance. Everything within the footprint of the lease, and there will be a fence around it, everything within that footprint will be the maintenance responsibility of the developer and their operators. So the city, this actually takes these portions of the landfill off of the city books in terms of maintenance costs. All that will be borne by the enforcer.
Well, it's a rather amazing thing to turn what is basically a city's land that is not generating very much revenue into something that potentially has a little bit of income for the city.
Yeah.
And benefit for the people. So that's very good. Thank you.
Okay. Jared, any questions?
Just two quick ones. Scott, we don't get to take credit for the 15-year lease, correct? The city can't apply that towards our goal of green energy?
So...
Because we can't claim those credits.
The way that the state is incentivizing these projects, they are providing cash, of course, but they are in exchange taking the renewable energy credits or certificates generated by the renewable energy asset, the solar arrays. And so whoever owns the renewable energy credits gets to make an environmental claim. So no, we shouldn't be counting that up towards anything, but certainly, you know, facilitating renewable energy development is good for, you know, the climate.
Of course. Second quick question, what's the build time from the end of this agreement when we approve it to implementation?
I don't have, I don't have a construction schedule from the developer, so I can't answer that. And I don't have a start date either. They do have, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's in the records. They had 18 months to, you know, start delivering electricity from the day that they were awarded the first of the two incentives. And I think that, that might be in my memo when that date, when that award was, but it was late last year. So there is a ticking clock on this project. It's not going to linger.
Okay. Well, if you get any news on that, just fill us in. It's not going to affect my vote. I was just curious.
Sure.
Thanks.
Bill Colbrook, any questions?
Yeah, I just got one. It looks like, you know, this work and this debate, you know, started like, you know, back in 2017, so it's been several years. And of course, I wasn't on the city council then, so I apologize. I'm just trying to get up to speed on some of the history. Just looking at the map, it looks like these two fields are somewhat boundary locked, you know, by some natural areas in the interstate. I'm just curious, is this at all expandable? I know the city owns land to the north of this field, and I'm just curious if a project like this is expandable in the future.
There's not a lot of developable space left on our landfill parcels. There's a little bit of balance of land, but it starts getting less flat, in some places significantly. So these arrays are also located in portions of the property that have the least amount of trees to remove. So this is probably going to be it, although we can always, you know, draw a polygon around other surplus vacant land out there and do another procurement and see if someone out there thinks that they can make a commercially viable project. But this is, this is probably going to be it. There's just not a lot of balance of good developable land there.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to council comments and discussion. Start with Mary Alice. Any comments or discussions?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Eric?
Just sort of an anecdote, if you want to laugh. The early history of getting solar power from reflecting mirrors is very amusing, and it's full of things catching fire and melting and stuff like that. So photovoltaic is much more prosaic.
No, no comment.
Bill Brown?
Nope.
Dennis Roberts?
No, nothing.
Jared?
No comment. Thank you.
Bill Colbrook?
I can't follow that, so no.
All right. I will call for a motion.
I move that we approve resolution number 2020-03-016R, a resolution approving a solar facility ground lease with Solarstar Urbana Landfill East LLC.
And I second it.
Moved by Jared, seconded... Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Will the clerk please call the roll? I guess I should have asked for discussion after the motion, but I think we're good. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes, that motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2020-03-017R, a resolution approving a solar facility ground lease with Solarstar Urbana Landfill West LLC.
And I second it.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Actually, I had discussion on this one.
Okay, we can do discussion.
Just to come back at Eric, I'm not sure if that was supposed to be a jab at me for bringing up the mirror thing. There are three huge, huge solar installations in the Mojave Desert. If you fly between here and Los Angeles, you can see them, and they use mirrors and boilers. So, if they're big enough, they can be very efficient in the modern world. That's the only discussion I had.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I believe, oh, go ahead.
This is Dennis, and I also believe that there was such an array at Cindia Laboratories in Albuquerque, South Albuquerque.
Okay. Eric, you had a comment?
Yeah, just, it wasn't a jab at anybody. The early days of any technology are often amusing, and this one was amusing in spectacular ways.
As is the early days of using Zoom for meetings, so.
Yes, right.
One day, we'll look back on this as well. Are we ready for the vote? Any other comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. And last item under new business is Ordinance Number 2020-03-016, which is ratification of emergency order 20-01 relating to the delivery of packaged liquor, and that was issued on March 18th, 2020. This was an emergency order that authorizes certain liquor license holders in the city of Urbana to provide for off-premises delivery of alcoholic liquor in the sealed original package for off-premises consumption. This emergency ordered followed the executive order issued by the governor where, that closed all bars and restaurants in the state of Illinois. And in an effort to assist local businesses to continue their business and to continue to, this would be liquor license holders to continue their business, continue to sell alcohol, and in some cases, in conjunction with food, I issued this emergency order. So, this provides for the sale and delivery of the package, let's see, sale and delivery of packaged alcoholic liquor for off-premises consumption by Class A, those are the bars, Class R1 and R2, those are restaurants, Class MB2 liquor licensees, that's the microbreweries, and sale and delivery of alcoholic liquor for off-premises consumption by Class BB liquor licensees. I've had a question about, what about the other local aspects of the code? Does that apply to these sales? And yes, the only thing that's different is the ability to sell and deliver packaged liquor for off-premises consumption. So, there's still required, everything else in our liquor code still applies. The dram shop insurance, the verification of age, the server, the age of the purchaser, the hours of operation, et cetera. So, nothing else was changed other than extending this to the liquor licensees to have the ability to sell for off-premises consumption. And I have to say, people have been very creative and innovative in how they have adapted over the past week to doing this, and I appreciate the patience of the license holders as we worked our way through this. And I very much appreciate the way the public has been supporting our local businesses. So, be happy to answer any questions. We'll start down the line again with Jared this time.
No questions.
Who's sitting there? That would be Dennis.
No, I don't have questions.
Bill Brown?
No questions.
Sharice?
None at all.
Was that a no?
Oh, yeah, that's a no.
Okay. Eric?
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm good with this.
Okay. Mary Alice?
I have two comments, but I don't know if this is the time to make them, so. I don't have any questions.
Okay, well, I'll get right back to you. Bill Colbrook, any questions?
One question. Is this, is the intent of this to support local business to keep commerce thriving and keep revenues flowing for local businesses and restaurants?
Yes. Mary Alice, comments?
I just have two comments. The first one is, A, I'm really impressed by how hard the city has been working to raise awareness of all the different changes that have been going on. It seems like things change every day. I've noticed that the city has tried to ensure that the public was very aware of the changes and would be able to visit the businesses. So, thank you for that. My second comment has to do with, oh, I just forgot my second comment. My second comment has to do with our discussion the last time in terms of how to handle these emergency orders. I think this is a perfect example of bringing something so that we can have a conversation. So, I also think that what we talked about last time is working well in this case. So, those are my two comments.
Thank you. Eric, any comments?
No, this is just the right thing to do at this time.
I'm gonna take that as a no comment. Bill Brown?
No, I don't have a comment.
Okay. Bill Brown?
No, just to say thanks for doing it. I think we have to maintain a lot of flexibility and let people be creative and find new ways to deliver services for a while.
Dennis?
Well, I think it's a useful tool for small businesses to retain customers, and I think it's a provable thing.
Thank you. Jared?
No comment, but I do have a motion.
Great.
I'm gonna move Ordinance Number 2020-03-016, ratification of emergency order 20-01, delivery of packaged liquor that was issued on March 18th, 2020. Be approved.
And I second it.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Before we adjourn, I just have a few announcements. There's no meeting next week, virtual or in person. It's the fifth Monday. I want to again thank everyone for complying with the governor's executive order to stay at home, shelter in place. I cannot tell you how proud we all are of our community for the response to these actions. And I am grateful to the state of Illinois, the governor, for his leadership here. He's taken a lot of the actions that we would have had, we would have taken at the local level, but the fact that they're statewide is saving lives. So, we are very, very thankful for that. The Landscape Recycling Center is closed until further notice. If you had a delivery that was scheduled for this week, those deliveries will be completed, but no new sales or orders will be taken. The city building, under the emergency declaration that you passed last week, we have closed the city building to the public. People needing to visit, for example, the police service desk or have an appointment, can do so by appointment and as well as other offices here. But the doors to the exterior are locked, and this is for the safety of the employees who are still working in the building as well as for the public. We have transitioned a number of employees to working remotely from home. I'm one of them, so I'm figuring out my new reality. And we do have some staff in the building as well, and that's one of the reasons that we are closed to the public. All city functions are continuing, and we expect that to be the case through the course of this pandemic as it moves through our country. So, again, I want to thank everyone for their cooperation. I want to thank UPTV, people behind the scenes, Jason Liggett and Austin Pontius for making this meeting go very, very smoothly as well as the city clerk and his staff. So, we miss you, but we're glad you're staying physically apart, and we'll stay in touch.
Could I ask if the clerk received any other public input during the meeting?
Oh, thank you for reminders. Any other public input?
No, nothing's come in.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with no further business before this virtual and in-person meeting, this meeting is adjourned.